I'd like to call to order the April 4th, 2012, meeting of Milton School Committee. As is our custom, I would invite you to stand as you're able and willing and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where our nation, under God, indivisible, will liberate any injustice.
On our agenda tonight, I have note one deletion under item seven, the item B, subitem B, the high school clubs and activities we'll put off until a future meeting. Anything else for our agenda tonight that needs to be amended? Seeing none, we'll clear the agenda, approve, and move on to citizen's speak. We have a few people who have indicated they'd like to speak tonight. As you come up, just remind people, citizens of Milton are invited to speak at the table. Please just give your names and addresses and try to limit yourself to three to five minutes as is our custom. All right? So first, we have Adrian Sullivan. You can just be over at the table by the microphone, so that would be fine. Thank you.
Thank you for having me speak. My name is Adrian Sullivan. I'm here with my husband Brendan Sullivan. I am a 14-year resident of Milton. My husband grew up in Milton. I have three children in the school department, in the school system. I have two children at Glover School and a child at Pierce Middle School. And pretty soon I will have one, and pretty soon we're moving on to high school, middle school, and elementary school. So I'm very much vested in the school district and in the town. I just wanted to follow up on a meeting that we had in January regarding the elementary school assignment policy and the discrepancies related to the line items that were in the fiscal year 13 budget. The proposed budget line items on page 12 appeared in the document that stated reassign, it called for the elimination of two full-time equivalent teachers, and with the impact of reassigning either Cunningham or Colicott English Grade Two students to another building, and reassigning Glover English Grade Four students to another building. So at response to those line items, a letter signed by 60 parents was sent to the school committee, to each of your email addresses, to the superintendent, requesting a meeting to discuss the concerns that we had. And it was also, it was budgetary concerns, but they're really fundamental concerns, and it's surrounding the elementary school assignment policy. We did have a meeting on January 24th. The school committee was given prior notice, and thank you to Superintendent Gormly, Chairman Pavlicek, Ms. Kelly also was in attendance, and Mr. Gillis as well.
Can I believe Mr. Walker?
No, Mr. Walker was not in attendance. And as a result of that meeting, it was a very open discourse. It was a great give and take. In the start of the meeting, Superintendent Gormly did indicate that it was most likely not going to happen, that Grade Two or Grade Four classes would be moved to a different building. However, upon further discussion, there was really, it was discussed that there was no contingency plan for what would happen with the second or fourth graders, whether this estimate of 117,000 in the budget would actually be negated by the cost to move the children. And really, a lot of issues were brought up in terms of student-teacher morale, community morale, and the implications to the student assignment policy. And we just want to further, just put on the record of the concerns that we have. It's really about, you know, although we don't need to worry about implementing that level-funded budget this year, we are really concerned about the contingency issues of what happens when students are placed in an elementary school and then they're told they need to move. And it's really based on a discretionary environment, which is, in some cases, terrific because it allows a lot of flexibility for administration, but at the same time, there's no checks and balances or really controls. And to that end, we would just like to put on the record that we have, in the letter, and also present a soft copy via email to the school committee for addendum. However, the policy, there is a list of policies referenced, starting with the 2007 elementary student assignment policy, all the way through to the letter that we received as parents about our first graders this year. So we were told in kindergarten information night last year that once a child is assigned to a school, that child will stay in that school for five years. It was shocking, to say the least, to look at the budget and see specifically line items saying, "That second grade class, that fourth grade class, and that school and that school of that English track of children may be moved." Without any contingency, without any discussion, clear violation of a policy that is open and discretionary. So to that end, we would really like to request urgent action of the school committee, and I'll just read what our action is that we are requesting. "Parents are concerned that allowing for budget line items to target specific classes of children sets a dangerous precedent that nullifies the policy set forth. Ultimately, if this type of budget process and implementation continues on the same path, the reputational risks to this department and to this town are incalculable. The legacy of Morgan versus Henigan, also known as the Garrity case, must not be ignored. This town is on a collision course that may result in lawsuits from multiple parties as a discretionary policy that potentially creates a de facto feeder system leading to separate educational environments and the promotion of an inequitable distribution of resources. And to that end, to avoid any potential reputational risks to this excellent school department, this excellent school system that all of us cherish, we ask that a forward-looking assignment plan encompassing all elementary students in all grades in all schools before the final first-grade assignment plan for the kindergarten population of this year gets established. We want to know as parents that we will not be blindsided by budget line items next year." Secondly, we'd like to have the school committee and the administration provide transparent information indicating potential assignment contingency plans. So if you're forward-looking for the next five years, before we make decisions to send our children to public school, we want to know that there are contingency issues in place, and we don't need to go through what we went through this budget process. And to that end, to avoid further issues and reputational risks, we're asking that a creation of a task force be implemented to look at the five-year historical implementation of the elementary school assignment policy and create recommendations to curtail policy violations and strengthen policy language. The task force should include school administration, parent groups from each elementary school, and faculty. The reason we need this is because transparent qualitative and quantitative information on the nature of the curriculums must be released. The parent information night provides, of last year's parent information night, was almost 30 pages of contingency plans of, I'm sorry, about a lottery of how children would be placed in a curriculum. There was no discussion of the curriculum. There was no, there's nothing in writing about what the curriculum is about. There's nothing, there's no data, there's no analysis. Parents cannot make an informed decision, and you're sending a message by putting these line items in a budget to this year's parents that children that are in an English track can and will be reassigned based on a student assignment policy. And just providing this information, transparent, easily understood information for all parents provided on the school system's website, is, in an aggregate manner, would not violate FERPA. It wouldn't. And parent guardians need useful historical information when making a district-mandated decision to sort their child at age six into a curriculum strand for five years. So you're asking us, as parents, to sort our children at age six based on curriculum information, based on data, based on social mores of this town, that we don't have enough information to make these decisions? And then, once you do make a decision, it could be thrown out the window. So it's a very tenuous environment, and it's just not acceptable. And so we're hoping that going forward, we can course-correct what's happening. I sat quiet five years ago when this happened. Now I have a fourth grader, and I will not rest until I know that my fourth grader can have the same type of education my seventh grader is getting now. And I'm not going to rest that my first grader may or may not have the same education that my fourth grader had. It's ridiculous. There's no continuum, there's no information, there's no place for parents to go to get straight facts and information. So to that end, I really hope that going forward, we can just put some policies and procedures in place, also controls and checks and balances in terms of providing a two-curriculum environment for the elementary school system. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Second, we have Conway Amar.
Thank you for your time. Nice to see you all. My name is Conway Amar from 119 Blue Hills Parkway here in Milton. I am here as a citizen, but also as a member of CDM. And the subject that I would like you to consider is improving the number of faculty of color in our school system. We have made progress over the last few years, but frankly, we need to continue to make progress and focus on this. You might think that I am appealing for the sake of those students of color in our system, but quite frankly, not only do students of color benefit from having faculty and administrators who look like them, but also, the white students in our system need to see role models, they need to see people of color as teachers as well. And it's ironic, and I'm sure that the superintendent will remind me, that I, as a former teacher at the high school, left the system, something that is a fact, and I have fond memories of being here, but I really do want to impress upon all of you that we need to continue the progress with regard to faculty of color in our town. I think it's part of our reputation, which is a good one, but we need to continue, if we want to continue to be one of the best towns in America, I think we need to continue to walk the talk. So that is the extent of my comments. I think I'll be followed by a fellow CDM member who will sort of emphasize this in a bigger context in a moment or two. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think you are right, as Chris Navin is the next on our list.
Thank you very much. I'm Chris Navin from 34 Cliff Road in Milton. CDM stands for Citizens for a Diverse Milton, civic organization in town that's about 16 years old. Incidentally, speaking of that award, Milton's the second-best place in America, sometimes you might wonder what the criteria are. They are available to look at, and one of the criteria is the level of diversity in town. So that it's not just the Blue Hills and the school system and whatever else, it's the fact that we do have a diverse population. So I support all the remarks that Conway, a fellow CDM member, made, and there are other CDM members in the audience, but I'm here to ask you to take a systemic view of the same issues. As you know, your own diversity policy sets the goal of a staff that reflects the demographic composition of the students and community for important reasons, namely that our students and school system as a whole will benefit greatly from contact with teachers and others who will serve as multicultural role models, and that affording our students the widest possible interaction with staff of diverse backgrounds will immeasurably contribute to the success of our educational programs, which is a quote from the policy. This policy objective provides an explicit criterion by which to measure the effectiveness of the recruitment and selection practices of this system. That is, are those practices advancing the system towards the policy objectives of the diversity policy? If not, which is how I read the data, then the practices in question need to be changed. The current recruitment and selection practices may help achieve other policy objectives, and they may be comfortably familiar. Nevertheless, if the practices cannot or do not achieve the policy objectives enunciated in the diversity policy, then those practices need to be changed, need to be improved. The current Milton High School principal search provides a unique opportunity for the school committee, the administration, CDM, and the town as a whole to examine whether the ways in which candidates were recruited, screened, and chosen had a positive or negative impact on the successful implementation of the Milton Public Schools diversity policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Justin Renz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Justin Renz, 48 Walnut Street here in Milton, Milton resident since 1999. My wife Jennifer Caputo-Renz is a lifelong Milton resident, a product of the Milton Public Schools from K through 9, and a high school educator for 11 years, including her last nine years at Milton High School, where she was Teacher of the Year here in 2003, retired in 2004 when our twins were born. We have three children, two in first grade and one in kindergarten. I'm here to voice my concern and disappointment at the direction that the English elementary track is headed, and to be fair, the course that it's been on for the past several years. The perception exists amongst parents of elementary school-aged children that the English baseline curriculum program is inferior to the French curriculum, and this false perception results in more and more parents choosing to enroll their children in the French program. As an example, in the upcoming 2012-2013 school year, at the Cunningham School, 17 children have chosen English while over 50 have chosen French immersion. This has led to the unfortunate situation where school administrators and the elementary leadership team are placed in compromising positions. Specifically, budget and enrollment recommendations are being made that are completely counter to specific promises made by the administration in days gone by. I am sure that this is not the intent of the leadership team, but it is an unintended consequence of the situation that we currently find ourselves in. Seeing a line item in the proposed 2013 budget, as Adrian alluded to, that specifically targeted the reassignment of English-track students in the second and fourth grade only served to exacerbate this growing divide, to which I say, where are we and why are we here? Milton is a very desirable town to live in, as national periodicals in the recent past have reminded us. As a generalization, our town is remarkably safe, clean, and fiscally responsible. It is a fair comment that Milton is one of the top towns to live in in our country. However, the Massachusetts testing score data would suggest that our town's schools are not excellent, but rather, good. I understand the reality of Milton's financial constraints, and Milton is very transparent as a town with its fiscal data. Parents of current and prospective elementary students deserve the same thing. Knowledge is power. Tax-paying parents deserve to make informed decisions. For example, how well do the English-track children do on the MCAS exams in the fourth, eighth, and 10th grades? How well do the French immersion students perform? Are there statistically significant differences? We don't know the answers to these or many other similar questions because the data has never been published. How can parents make an informed decision without this information? The first two rules of Robert Fulgham's book, "All I Really Need to Know," I learned in kindergarten, are, one, share everything, and, two, to play fair. How ironic is it that parents of kindergarten children have to make their elementary-track decision bereft of any historical trends and information? There seems to be a cloak of secrecy around this data. The citizens of Milton deserve better. I do not believe that good is acceptable, and I do not believe that this committee aspires to manage and cultivate a merely above-average rating for its schools. I am sure the committee aspires for more. We should be great, and anything less should not be accepted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last one on my list is Frank Schroth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's nice to see Ms. Renz, who also taught my daughter to swim, among other things, and will always remember her very fondly. I'm here because I wanted to announce a candidate's forum that's going to take place at Fuller Village. I believe Superintendent Gormly may have mentioned this at your last meeting. I have a couple other details that I just wanted to announce to you and encourage the public to attend. It will be at Fuller Village, April 14th, 1:00 in the afternoon, and I'm proud to say that I'm partnering with the Milton High School debate team in this effort. They are full partners with me on this. I should mention, I'm the editor of My Town Matters, which is a local website that covers the issues, people, and events that matter to Milton, Massachusetts. I also didn't mention, I live at 39 Avalon Road. And so that's really it. The students are working with me to decide the format of this forum and to decide the questions, and I would encourage everyone to attend. This will be the last opportunity that the public will have to hear from candidates firsthand. All the candidates for town-wide offices have committed. There's one possible candidate who may not be able to make it, but I'm confident the majority will. And if, we would also encourage questions, you can send questions to Frank at MyTownMatters.com or to Coach Fitzgerald, the coach of the debate team, and Fitzgerald@MiltonPS.org. Thanks.
Thank you, Frank. Does anyone else wish to speak for citizen's speaker who didn't have a chance to sign up? Seeing none, then we'll move on with the rest of our agenda. There are no minutes to approve tonight. That is my fault. I neglected to get them back to Charlene in time. We'll have them at our next meeting. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Pavlicek. First, I'd like to invite up the Milton High School Drama Club, and our advisor is out ill today, but the president of the Drama Club, Lily Melcher, will be the spokesperson.
Anywhere over there.
All right.
So Mr. Halloran, are you taking Lily's place?
Yes, Lily was unable to come as well, so I'll be...
Could you just spread the mics out a little so they can pick you up for the folks at home? We can hear you, but there's a light too, too.
And so you're prepared via Dr. Walsh, and you'll just make sure everyone gets introduced?
Of course.
Thanks, Mr. Halloran.
Milton High School Dramatic Society performed the absurdest play, The Bald Soprano, by Eugene Ionesco, at the annual Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild High School Festival. The play was one of three, was one of three out of eight to advance to the, from the preliminary round to the semifinal round. The preliminary round was performed at Ducksbury High School on March 3rd, and we competed in the semifinal round at Weston High School on March 10th. And this was the first semifinal round for Milton High School Dramatic Society since the year 2000, so it was a big deal. And we won in all, in both the preliminary and the semifinal rounds, we won seven awards. Gabby Bonjono and myself, as well as Lily Melcher, won acting awards, and Laura Hess, our director, won for excellence in technical directing at the preliminary round, and Aaron Potter Jr. won for...
Set design.
Set design and lighting at the semifinal round. And we'd also like to say a big thank you to our unsung hero award, Amanda Liberty, who was unable to be here tonight, but she has done a lot for the technical crew, and she doesn't get the praise that she deserves, so we'd like to have a big thank you for her as well. So for here tonight, we have, from the crew, Will Hess, Gabby Bonjono from the cast, Aaron Potter from the crew, myself, Dan Halloran from the cast, Julia Clark from the cast, our director, Laura Hess, and crew, David Cluckley.
Outstanding, and your advisor, Dr. Sheila Walsh, co-producer, Ms. Mullin.
Along with Eileen Mullin, yes.
And also Mr. Bertrand.
Yes, Mr. Bertrand is our technical director, or technical advisor.
And so this is a huge accomplishment, a tremendous amount of work, natural talent that you have developed, and to go to this statewide competition, we couldn't be more proud of each of you and as a group, your achievement. And so we wanted to share with the school committee tonight and recognize you.
Thank you very much.
School committee members.
Questions for our...
Questions for our...
Congratulations.
How did you choose Bald Soprano?
Well, I guess it was Lily and I that chose it because she's the president of our Dramatic Society here, and along with John, John Lummelman, and I'm the vice president. And Dr. Walsh gave us the opportunity, since we were seniors and officers, to have input about which play we wanted to do, and it's like one of mine and Lily's favorite plays, so we really wanted to do that this year. So that's us.
Well-learned, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'm going to ask to join us at the table, our team from Pierce School, from Pierce Middle School. I believe we have our art teachers, and we have our Globe Scholastic Art Award winners. So I'm going to turn the introductions over to Ms. Sherman and Ms. Thompson.
So it's just me tonight, Ms. Thompson couldn't come. Come on.
So Stephanie Sherman, Pierce Middle School art teacher, and I'll turn the introductions over to you.
Thank you.
Very, very exciting.
Me, too. We have Mr. Joshua Carey here, we have Marie Danbrook, and we have Lily Melby.
Would you pull the mic over just so that, and would, could, may we ask Dr. Noreen Diamond-Birdette, your director, to join us at the table, too? Dr. Birdette?
Sure. Thank you.
So would you do the introductions again, Ms. Sherman, just in case?
Sure. So we have a Grade Eight student, Joshua Carey, right here next to me. We have, yeah! We have Marie Danbrook, 8th grade also, in the middle. And finally, our 7th grade winner, Lily Melby. And I have their art hiding behind me.
And so could you speak to the competition?
Absolutely. The Boston Globe Scholastic sort of competition is open from 7th grade to 12th grade, and they select very few artworks to be sort of awarded the gold and silver key winners. And we happen to get a gold, two silvers, two honorable mentions, and, no, I'm sorry, four honorable mentions, two are from the same student who was unable to come tonight.
And so would you speak to the artists for each picture?
Sure. Up in the top right, we have Joshua Carey's watercolor painting called My Creative Drive. We have Marie Danbrook's Vintage Collection, which is also a painting. Lily Melby's, it's a triptych print, so it's like a Yukioe-type ink with a watercolor and collage element. Anne Marie Grudem was also a winner. She was a honorable mention. Hers is a watercolor called A Sunday Afternoon Tea. And Kate Reed, who also could not attend, had two honorable mentions, A Whole Rest, which is a picture of her, I believe that was her violin, and A Cerebral Matter, which is just an abstract pen and ink drawing.
Wow. Beautiful. And we have another award to share while we have this group at the table. Ms. Sherman, would you share with us?
Yes. The Publication Artists Magazine selected one of my self-portraits as its first-place painting for 2012, and it'll be featured on their website dates any day now, so I can send out... any day now, so I can send out the website. And I have the painting...
Would love to see it.
Just in case, because I knew you would want to see.
Wow. 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 We're very, very proud of your students and Ms. Sherman.
Thank you very much.
And I think in our world, we classify someone like yourself as a lifetime learner, a lifetime artist, so an unbelievable role model for your students. And your enthusiasm, both you and Ms. Thompson, is to be recognized. And to your students and to our students, their accomplishments, and to be recognized at this level is a huge accomplishment.
Yes, definitely.
Fantastic artists, budding artists. But my question is, when you paint those, are you actually looking at a picture and then painting it? Or are you, is it coming straight from your...
From the mirror. Yeah.
What does that mean, from the mirror?
Oh, like, I set up a mirror and I just take a palette knife and paint it.
Oh, I'm talking about the other pictures, actually. The other ones.
Oh, the other ones were a variety of assignments compiled since September. So some of them were homework assignments, some of them were classroom assignments that led them to do their own independent work. So I think they, well, and Lily isn't my student, so I think, I guess, they would be better to answer maybe what their inspiration was.
That's a great question. Dr. Birdette, do you want to pull the mic over for them?
Oh, yeah. Would you like to say what your inspiration was first?
So my question, my question is, when you paint, when you made your painting, were you looking at a photograph and then you painted it, or did it just come from your head?
No, I had the still life in front of me while I painted it.
I also looked at a still life while I painted it.
I just had an idea of what I wanted it to look like, so.
And you did it. Excellent.
So you had an idea, and then you just painted it?
Mm-hmm.
That's great.
Ms. Bagley, judge.
Can I get a question in?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, 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 I think it's great. I love talking about art. For the students, what, how long have you been doing this? What made you want to be an artist? I mean, did you just start this year? Did you start in kindergarten? Like, how did you get here? Is that too hard of a question? I'm sorry.
Guess we've started very early. I know I have.
You started really what?
Early.
Early? Okay.
I don't know.
It just spoke to you.
My family did a lot of art, too, so I just kind of did it, too.
I think I know your mother.
I just started in kindergarten and worked on it from then, and, yeah.
Wonderful, wonderful. So great to see you guys.
Anything else?
Congratulations to all of you students. And to see the hallways of the Pierce School is to know your art.
Yes, we're very proud of our students. Every wall has seen it.
Absolutely does. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, congratulations.
Next, we want to ask to join us at the table, Ms. Lovett, our, did I skip? No, I didn't mean to. Dr. Noreen Diamond-Birdette, with her All-State Festival participants and after-school singers. Dr. Birdette, do you want to join us? Mr. Lynch, is that all right? And would you describe to the school committee and the viewing public the accomplishments of these students?
We belong, we belong to the Eastern District in Massachusetts, and you've probably heard about all the wonderful students who are invited to participate in that because of their wonderful scores that they get at the audition. And then if they have a very high score, they get a recommendation to try out for Allstate. And now they're competing against the five districts that there are in Massachusetts. And these seven students were all accepted to the Massachusetts Allstate Festival this year. We have Talia Nutting, who was in chorus, and Rebecca Liberman in chorus. And I don't know you apart, because they, look at these. This is Lily and Rose Marshall. Look at them. Okay. And they are, were both in the orchestra as freshmen. Quite remarkable. Carolyn Truax was in the concert band, and Rebecca Sims in the concert band, and Andrew Mo in the chorus. Our seven students at Allstate, performing at Symphony Hall. And a bit of news that I just received this week, the next level, I mean, Allstate is like, wow, as far as you can get, but every other year, not Eastern District, but Eastern United States, the Northeast District of the United States, they send out recommendations. And Andrew Mo has a recommendation for that festival for next year. In the past thirty years, we have had four students who have gotten to that level, so that is how special that is.
Congratulations. And so you should know that next to your families, Dr. Noreen Diamond-Birdette is so proud of you. And when your accomplishments become public, she emails me, and within three seconds, I email the school committee. And so they share in the pride and congratulations of each of you. So you have distinguished yourselves, and it's very, very exciting.
Thank you. Congratulations, you all. And now you, because...
Question, when is the, when is the Allstate Festival this year?
It was.
It was.
It was in March. Music in Our Schools Month, so it was in March. Very early in March, the first weekend.
Can I ask a question? It's the same question I wanted to ask the art, I asked the art students, when did you all start doing this? I mean, you don't have to say a specific time, but I'm just curious, how long?
I think, like, starting in middle school is when I joined the middle school course, yeah. Well, actually, yeah, elementary school, actually.
Elementary school.
I started playing the tuba in fourth grade.
What grade?
I started playing the cello when I was five.
I started playing the saxophone when I was in fourth grade.
Yeah, since I'm her twin, I started playing the violin when I was five.
I first was in chorus in elementary school, but I, when I was in elementary school, I didn't know. So I would say middle school was when I, like, got serious about it.
Yeah, pretty much the same thing. I was in middle school when I really, like, found out that, like, I loved it.
My point being, of course, the importance of early art and music in our schools, so thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for coming.
The after-school singers would like to share a little snippet of a song, because we didn't get here in March, because you had so much else going on in March. We just moved this a little bit. This is one of the groups that needs after-school. We need, we need first names.
And with all of the concerts during the month of March and the music, every morning, school committee members who are at meetings enjoy your music every morning. This will really put a cap on arts in our school month.
One, two, three, four. Pass me the jazz, homemade and hot. I want to get in the groove to the bottom of the beat, so keep it cooking and stomp your feet. Pass me the jazz, all that you've got. Put temptation in my way with a bottle of blues and a flavor of fun. Dig, dig, dig it and dig it. Ba-doo-ba-doo-doo-doo, ba-da-da, da-doo. Do-do-do-do, ba-doo-ba-doo-ba-doo, da-doo. Da-doo-ba-doo-ba-doo, da-doo. Let's spice it up, let's amplify it. I didn't come for peace and quiet, heat it up, it's time to fry it. Hook me on a jazzy tun. Da-da-da-da, da-da-da-da, doo. Ba-doo-dee, doo-doo-doo, da-doo. Do-da, do-da, da, ba-da-da. Do-do-do-dop, ba-doo-doo, do-do-doo-ba, 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 do-do-doo-ba. Dance off loving the smell from the oven, always hitching to kill the kitchen. If you're in the mood to play, I believe your wish is the dish of the day. Let's get out of this interlude, the staff is ready for swing shift. One, two, three. Come on, pass me the jazz, homemade and hot. I want to get in the groove to the bottom of the beat, so keep it cooking and stomp your feet. Pass me the jazz, all that you've got. Put temptation in my way with a bottle of blues and a flavor of fun. Pass the jazz, pass the jazz. Appreciate it, celebrate it, elevate it, syncopate it. Pass me the jazz and je, je, je. Put temptation in my way with a bottle of blues and a flavor of fun. Sweet harmonies on the menu. Didn't I tell you was my favorite, then you'd come into heaven, I don't want to stay as long as you. Pass me the jazz, homemade and hot. A baby's a loon, a jerk, shorty's jazz. Yeah, yeah, that's the jazz.
Nice work. Thank you very, very much.
Just, just one minute, I have a revenue-producing idea. Let's record them and put them on iTunes.
Excellent. Thank you very, very much. Thank you, Dr. Noreen Diamond-Birdette. Next, we'd like to ask up Ms. Eileen Lovett, our teacher, Milton High School teacher, Family and Consumer Studies. And again, March, under the direction of Dr. Noreen Diamond-Birdette. Noreen, do you want to join us at the table? Noreen, oversees K-12 art, music, and Family and Consumer Studies. And so to fill the whole circle of art and music, tonight, Ms. Lovett agreed to come. And you'll do the introductions of our student. Welcome, Ms. Lovett.
Hi, I'm Elaine Lovett, and I've been at Milton High School for the past five years. Ms. Gormly invited me back. I had taught previously at Pierce Middle School from nineteen seventy-seven to ninety-six, so I've seen both levels, and I do enjoy Milton High School very, very much. Besides March being Nutrition Awareness Month, I just wanted to, and this is my teaching assistant, Latrice Coleman, who assists me with the Foods One class. Most of the classes are classes of twenty-four, and this particular class does have some special needs students, which can be challenging in a large number. And Latrice is very helpful in facilitating very smoothly to get things going anyplace that things need to be done. So she's a great asset to my class that needs that period. But I did, before, I will let you hear from Latrice in a second, I did want you people to know that during March, the Foods One and Foods Two classes worked with the Milton Food Pantry. February and March, we actually, the Food Pantry's doing a project. They are getting a community cookbook going. Their clients and staff had submitted recipes, and Pat Brawley asked if we might be able to assist with some of the nutritional information. So the students did. We came up to the computer lab up here. They were able to break down the recipes, and we calculated all the calories for the cookbook that will be published in June of two thousand twelve. It's hopefully going to be able to be passed out at the three hundred fiftieth commemorative event. So that was a high point for us, along with, we have in the past, done fundraising for the Food Pantry. We've had Ms. Brawley in discussing the role of the Food Pantry. And the students, in my visit there a couple of weeks ago, we had student volunteers there. We also did pass out to the members of the Food Pantry for the month of March. We had copies of the Choose My Plate, which is, I think you heard from Ms. Morgan concerning her nutrition program in the food service area. And we follow this in my classes as well, the Choose My Plate. And so we were able to pass this to the Food Pantry clients. And along with, we also passed it to our food, to our pre-K program as well. The sugar, the ways in which sugar, snacks, and treats can be cut back on. So we tried to not just reach the students in Milton High School, but also do some outreach as well. And we'll continue with that task. Nutrition in my classes is an ongoing thing, not just, I don't just kind of corner it to, like, Fridays or something like that. Every one of our hands-on activities has the nutrition information included, since it's such a vital piece of information for everyone, from this high to the elderly. So hopefully, we were able to reach a wide variety and continue to reach a wide variety of people. We have a courtyard garden project that we started last summer, will continue that this summer. We have grow bags out in the courtyard that will be filled again. Hopefully, late May, we have, last year, we were able to harvest potatoes, carrots, and beets. This year, we'll skip the beets. The beets were not too successful. The potatoes, having never had freshly grown potatoes, and the students, when they saw them go in, and then we pulled them out, were a little bit shocked at the way they grew. And the carrots, we'll work hard on and see if we can get those a little bit better, but we may expand a little bit. We stuck with root vegetables mainly because of the fact that those were a little bit easier for us to handle, and they didn't require quite as much of the hands-on on a daily basis. Let's see. So I think, with all that said, I could go on and on, but I won't. Latrice Coleman, as I said, is one of my students and my teaching assistant. I've had Latrice in Foods One and Foods Two. She is currently going, has plans to go and pursue culinary arts in baking and pastry at Southern New Hampshire University, and she'll be attending there this fall. So, and Latrice can also...
These snacks are a hundred calories, so really healthy. And these are the pamphlets that we distribute to the Milton Food Pantry. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So those are the pamphlets that we distribute to the Milton Food Pantry. And those snacks are a hundred calories, so very nutritious.
What do we think? Should we share?
Um, there are many Greek muffins, low-fat cookies, cat cookies, dry roasted almonds, dried apricots, raisins and pistachios. Yum.
So we took, we kind of took our, our idea from all of the little packets and decided we could make our own little packets. So Foods Two, yesterday, made some muffins that can be eaten hot or cold. So Foods Two yesterday made some muffins that can be eaten hot or cold. We also have our recipe in here, and all of this information, as I said, was available to our students as well as the pantry and the preschool parents.
Ms. Lovett, school committee members?
How many calories?
100 in each and every one of those packets. And you'll also notice that we, we went with small bags, because the smaller the bag, it doesn't give us that idea that we're cheating ourselves. If we put them in big baggies, it makes things look very small. But we, we kind of toned down our bags so that our, our head would get the idea that we were really filling up.
Did you say 100 calories?
100 calories in every one of those, so.
I appreciate you reaching out to the Food Pantry in Milton, and they really appreciated the work from the students, and they look to strengthen that partnership. And so the work you do in the Milton Public Schools and in the community, we want to thank you.
Thank you so much for all your support.
Thank you.
It was delicious.
Great questions. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to invite up Dr. Joseph Aranjio, the principal of Milton High School, with the Milton High School Site Council presentation. You could think that we planned this in September to have the high school groups with the Milton High School Site Council culminating this evening. Dr. Aranjio, do you want us to push the table up so?
No, no, I think that'll work. We can all.
I'm going to leave the introductions up to you, Dr. Aranjio.
Well, first of all, after, we're not here to sing, and we have no candy bars to, to deliver to you. But, but we hope we have something that maybe is valuable on a long-term basis. So if you'll bear with us, we're about to present the essence of our school improvement plan. And we believe that all of you received a yellow packet over the weekend. Our school improvement plan, just so you'll recognize it, is a 11-page document, cut up into five portions, five parts, if you will. The first part, which deals with high academic achievement for all students, takes up virtually half the plan, I think, five pages. There are about 80 activities, events, initiatives in the plan. So it's pretty detailed, and we also think kind of comprehensive. The plan was crafted by our school site council. The council has 11 members on it. Pretty interesting and quite diverse groups. There are two administrators, three faculty members, three parents, two students, and one at-large member. And the average attendance at our meetings, which start at 7:00 in the morning, are 11 of the 12 folks who are on the committee, you know, come to all the meetings. So what we are going to do is present, we're not going to read to you page by page, activity by activity, but we're going to give you sort of an overview and a presentation through the eyes of, we hope will be a, a pretty interesting duo, two parents, Mr. Shapiro and Mr. Towor, who will walk you through the plan, talk about key elements from it. We hope if you have questions, we can field them through our student representative who's here, or faculty members. And we hope this thing makes some sense. More importantly, it makes a difference for kids at the school. So with that done, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Shapiro.
Thank you, Dr. Aranjio. Steve Shapiro, one of the parents on the Site Council. And when our beloved superintendent, Mary Gormly, winked at me in early September about joining the Site Council, and I can never say no to her.
None of us can.
I did talk to one of the other parents before we started, and our conversation was, what role do we play? What can we contribute to the Site Council? And what's the overall big picture of, of why are we there? And we quickly came to a consensus after the first meeting, and we talked about a lot of issues. And I think we were inspired by a plaque that was on Dr. Aranjio's office. And that plaque reads basically, "The main thing is to keep the main thing the main thing." And by that, we mean that everything we talk about in Site Council really had to do with student achievement. How the different components of how we manage Milton High School all work together to create great student achievement for all the students. And that really became the topic of conversation for the following seven months of meetings.
My name's David Towor, 756 Canton Avenue. I have four kids in the school system, and I'm delighted to be here. I want to, first of all, thank the administration for inviting me to be on the Site Council. I think it was, I, I think it's a terrific experience, and I would encourage other parents to do the same. Student achievement, our job is easy when you start with the right answer. Everybody wants student achievement. The teachers, that's their job. The students, they win big. Administration, they become proud. The parents, that's why we're here at Milton High School, student achievement. So getting it right from the start is critical to our council's success. The real challenge is how do you do that? And so that's what I want to talk about. And I've got a couple of slides here, and Steve wanted to hog the microphone and do the other 10, so we'll do that. Just kidding. So someone must have known that I'm in the business of helping business leaders do planning and strategy and operational improvement, because we needed a plan. And when you plan, you can plan in one of two ways. You can do it by accident and hope it happens. And sometimes you buy a mega bucks ticket and you actually win, not here in Milton, but somewhere. Or you can plan your destiny. And so we, early on, decided that we needed to plan this, this Site Council effort. So what we're trying to do here is to say that we have a plan in place that we believe will win for Milton High School. So what exactly is that plan? Next slide, Alan. So we, we said really there's five things that we need to do. And the first one, which is in the middle, is teacher performance and evaluation. It's in the middle for a reason, because it's the most important. With all due respect to the school committee, the school could function without the school committee, but it can't function without the teachers. So we need to be able to have teacher performance as the core of our strategy. And what about those teachers? We had a chance to work with, with Tracy and with Kathy and with Byrne, and our expectations were exceeded in terms of their participation in this process at 7:00 in the morning, and then they have to go to work. So I think it was great. What I wanted to comment on was the evaluation piece, and we spent a fair amount of time doing that. We have teachers that are, we have teachers that are excellent, we have teachers that are good, and that we have teachers that need to improve. And we need to move all of them forward. If you have an excellent teacher, the strategy there is to reinforce their excellence. If you have a good teacher, you can work with them to improve. If you have a teacher that needs to improve, you can put a plan in place to make that happen. To borrow John Kennedy's famous quote, "All boats rise with a high tide," and we believe in creating that high tide. So student excellence is about pushing the envelope, setting the standard, moving forward. We were very impressed with Dr. Joe's and the Milton High School performance evaluation process. Couple of parents really weren't aware, we were ignorant of what, what really goes on. We kind of had our doubts, didn't have any data, but when we asked the questions, we got the answers. And there's an excellent student evaluation and teacher evaluation process in place. It's the core of the strategy, and we need to put it in the middle. What else do we need to, to make this strategy come, come to fruition? A curriculum that works, programs and instructional rigor that we stick to, a student experience and a student environment that promotes learning and growth, and finally, a communication plan to all of the constituencies. So we believe that all five pieces are critical. We have this, you've been fed tonight, you've been, you know, wined and dined and songs and, and we just give you a 12-page Microsoft Word document that would put anybody to sleep. But that's what our assignment was, and that's what we're doing tonight. So we believe there's five components to this plan. We believe the core is teacher performance and evaluation. But in order to do that, you've got to set the right curriculum, you've got to provide the scope, programs and rigor that make learning possible, an environment where the students learn and grow, not only from the teachers but with each other, and finally, a communication program where everyone, every constituent, especially parents, know how great an experience this could be. Because I'm not sure that's the case. There's a reason why we did it a puzzle, because this all has to fit. You can't just do one thing at a time. This is not a linear strategy. Okay? We need to do these things concurrently. So let me turn it back to Steve, who wants to take you through some detail.
Thank you. So as parents, we were kind of shocked, pleasantly shocked, at how rigorous the teacher performance and evaluation process was at Milton High School. We really didn't realize it was so all-encompassing, including, you know, snapshot meetings, which were the teachers sitting down with their department head and their principal and really reviewing their performance, in addition to all the other formal parts of their evaluation. So it was quite rigorous, and our first reaction was, wow, we, we just didn't expect it to be that all-encompassing. But we were pleasantly surprised and happy that it was, because we all agreed that teacher performance and evaluation was at the core of that puzzle that you saw on the last slide. Curriculum, scope, and development. As many of you know, there are some changes coming to the math and science curriculum, and a lot of changes going nationwide, actually, to be more in line with the common course standards that are going to be in all 50 states. And also kind of just positioning our student body to perform better on the different tests that they'll need to take, whether it's MCAS or later on SAT. Every time at the meeting, the word rigor always seemed to come up, and the idea that we're constantly trying to provide that rigor for students at all levels, not just those in honors classes, but at every level of the school. And speaking of rigor, we found out that half the students in the school are in either AP or honors classes. And basically, we never stopped talking, though, about challenging students at all different levels. And I think another term that came up a lot was critical thinking. You hear the buzzwords in the media about 21st century skills. I mean, that is the emphasis that our Department of Education really wants all schools to, to do in the future, to be ready for all of our students in the United States, and especially in Milton, to be able to compete with those from those other countries that are growing and also have strong education systems, and our economy is competing with their economy. So the more that our students have those skills, the better, and that comes with the rigor.
My name's Rajine Jean-Michel. I'm a senior here at the high school. I live on 293 Elliott Street. And talking about rigor, I feel like the teachers, they're always trying to implement rigor, and it's a sense of motivation to us as students, and I really do appreciate that. From one example for me was in my math class last year, and I took pre-calc, and I noticed how a lot of the calculus students were always doing like big and kind of scary equations. And from looking at it from a standpoint that I didn't really know much, I was a little bit afraid and timid, but with the encouragement that my teachers gave me, knowing that I can, that I will be able to do it with practice and with the right inspiration and motivation I can. And now that I'm actually learning those scary equations and things, I'm just like, oh my gosh, I can't believe I can do it. So thus, one of the things that I really appreciate is that our teachers do give us students rigor, no matter whatever grade level or just whatever class you take.
And it was great to have Rajine on the council, because it seemed like every different club or activity, or, of course, we talked about, she really did have firsthand knowledge and had something to say about it, which, you know, at 7:00 AM, it's not easy. Okay, Alan, next one. Oh, could you go back one? Yeah, so student support in Milton High School experience. So we just talked about the different supports at all levels to help students. And I also had firsthand knowledge, because my son was a counselor for the freshman seminar, which was created to help freshmen that needed a little extra support, because that's a transition year and difficult for a lot of students to make that jump from eighth to ninth grade. So I think that's a critical year to, you know, use your resources, because for some students, it's a, it's a big step up, and whatever help they can get, whether it's from the faculty or from upperclassmen, is really helpful. So there's a lot of different programs like that, that we discussed. Communicating with constituents, we just talked about the different ways that we can communicate and, you know, the benefits of the email blasts that come regularly, and how parents are, you know, updated on everything that's going on. So it's a very kind of open communication system. David, you had mentioned to me you'd like to, whenever a puzzle comes up, you'd like to pop back up, so.
So, well, very quickly, I, I, this is just important in terms of this whole implementation of the strategy. If you believe that the Site Council is presenting an appropriate strategy, then it's all in the execution. And so implementing a strategy, it needs to be aligned and focused on student achievement. That should be the single unifying agenda. The various initiatives that we would undertake, they should be integrated so that they complement each other and leveraged. And then the third point is, we need to be totally committed to this. So part of that communication thing is, the parents need to be involved, and they need to understand. The students need to be involved, so they know what's expected of them. The administration should be involved, so they can provide the right environment. The school committee sets the right policy, and ultimately, the teachers deliver the goods. That's the core process of education, it's the teachers. So if, if we all get on one purpose, we all agree to one plan, we all speak with one voice, it's a win for everybody.
You, you can see the next steps in the slide. Basically, we, we didn't spend a lot of time, obviously, talking about the NIESC visit, because we hadn't received the results yet, but it, it always did loom large that this year, NIESC did come and take a look at the school, and Dr. Aranjio had heard some preview of some of their comments, and that's all good constructive criticism that we could use while shaping this plan. And the last slide is just a compilation that Alan had put together from interviewing different members of the Site Council as a way of asking them how they, their experience was. And I think it was very positive for everyone involved. So we're very open to any questions anyone would have about the Site Council.
I potentially wanted to keep our presentation short, so that you could ask lots of questions.
I'm a big, I'm a huge advocate for motivational and inspirational speaking. Is that what you're advocating for, is bringing in professional motivational speakers to the classrooms? Is, was that part of the? Was that part of the, or was it just having the teachers inspire them?
Now, I think if, if that, if that question is directed at something I said, I think our team's emphasis was on teacher, teacher focus. Teachers can do this. If the teachers had a budget or if the teachers had a colleague or an opportunity to bring in someone from the outside, I think that would be, that would be a bonus.
Dennis? That would be a bonus. But, all the conversations we had and anything that I've been introduced to at Milton High School, and I've been around a few years, is the teachers have the willingness and the ability to do all the promotion and performance that we need to do.
So, you think that they're trained to inspire more than teach?
I think they're committed to inspire.
Yeah.
I think, I'm going to ask you to answer this question. I think they're committed to promote and inspire. I think there is a program in place to evaluate their performance that reinforces their skillset to promote and inspire. And I think the, the culture is such that it's going all in the right direction.
Because I like, I like one of the strategies at the beginning here, about changing your destiny and... Is this one of the things that you would like to hear as a senior, from a teacher?
The thing is, teachers aren't really motivational speakers per se, it's just how they're teaching us and how they just tackle each lesson and all the examples that we do to us as students. We always feel like that's encouraging to us, just because we want to do our best and want to prove that we are able to take on these certain challenges. But, they, yes, they do motivate us, but just indirectly mostly.
Sharon?
Thank you. That was a really nice conversation. It was thorough and gave us a flavor for all that, all of the work that the school site council does. I was on school site council and it's really fun to see some of the things that we initiated, like the freshman experience, you know, we just started that my last year on, on school site council. So, there's so much happening. And the document that you've given us, the school improvement plan, is extensive and so well-written. I wonder if, for the viewing public, if you could just highlight the goals that are listed there, so that they have a flavor for, for what was included in it.
The goals are actually the same goals that every school has, so it ties us all together, all six buildings, really work from the same goals. We added a few. One in particular that we expanded and I think Dr. Arangio referenced this, we spend really the first three pages on high academic achievement and you asked a question about encouragement and I think we're saying that so much of this is based on, we need to have a plan, but we also need to have very, very high expectations, but those expectations need to be clear. And I think that you'll find that, that that's a theme that runs throughout. As far as specific goals, we, we are going to have a whole handful of goals, I think 33 of them, that we're going to be implementing over the next five years from NIASC and they're all connected. Every, every single one of them have a place in this plan and we were very fortunate, I think, when we were creating this plan, to know that was coming and we had a lot of discussions around that. I don't know if I really answered your question or not.
Well, I was just thinking that people at home didn't have a sense of all that was in here. So, basically, the way it's presented for us is that there's a goal and then there's an initiative to address those goals. And it's very thorough and, well, very well done.
Yeah, Mr. Walker referred to this when we were here presenting our NIASC preliminary report and you have a goal, you have an initiative, but that's great. But, if you don't have a person responsible and if you don't have a timeline and if you don't know what resources you need and you don't know how you're going to actually know if you've achieved that goal, then it's a plan that's most likely, it may work, it may not work. And I think that goes back to our first slide, that everyone wants to do well, but if you don't plan and then perhaps even more importantly, if you don't actually implement the plan and hold yourself accountable for it, then how do you know if it actually was done? We feel very good about, I feel very good about this plan and the one thing I would add is that I've learned a tremendous amount about the value of involvement from the community, not just our parents, but even within the school, we become a bit isolated in our own roles. Having a committee like this, this is a much better document than it would, than it would have been if we would, we had done it in isolation. Particularly, hearing from parents that say, we don't, when you, when you use these terms, we don't understand what they mean. You throw out the word rubric, what is a rubric? And we have a discussion about it. What is the evaluation system? Because if you have a teacher that you have a concern about, how are you approaching that? And so, we gave some very clear, so it taught me that we need to be much more clear in our communication to the public and, and make sure that there's an open door. So, one of the things that the site council is going to add going forward, we want to have a way for the public to communicate directly with the site council. So, we're going to have an email address that's posted and so that they can send questions or comments directly to the site council. So, we'll have at least that kind of a portal going on a regular basis.
First, I would say, good work. I think this is a plan that obviously shows quite a bit of thought and the collective wisdom of the group. Can we put the graphic back up that, where you talk about the five drivers of student This is, I think, a pretty powerful slide, because I think it makes it easy to understand what you see as the five drivers. And I couldn't agree more that teacher performance and evaluation is at the center of all that. What I'd like to hear from you on is, with each one, just, just talk a little bit about what you see as the key execution challenge or challenges and the key resource challenges. Because I'm pretty sure that as you talk each of these through, part of, part of it was where are we and where do we need to go or where do we need to get to? And part of that is, what do we see as implementation or execution challenges and what are the resource needs that we have and are we there or are there some gaps that we need to be concerned about?
Again, the, the NIASC, we, we really did receive 90 hours, I think, we were given 90 hours of professional consultation and the diagnostics that they've given us give us a very clear path of how we're going to address really each one of these, these keys. So, when I look at curriculum...
Alan, I'm asking a slightly different question. I'm asking a little more about the deliberations of the site council. I, I read the NIASC report, so I, I understand what they're, what they identified and what they're recommending. I'm looking to hear a little more about your discussions and what you concluded about those five drivers. Because I, I think frankly, this is a graphic or a slide that everyone could understand. The NIASC report is pretty detailed and quite a bit of information, some jargon and I think, so I think this is really helpful, but I'm just looking for a little drill down about, what did you see as the challenges here? And, and do you feel like we're effectively resourced or do we need some, are the things that the school committee, for example, needs to be thinking about?
Well, I'm sure the parents are delighted to talk about this, Leroy.
Good.
So, the site council talked at length about teacher evaluation, starting with, do you have one? Well, of course, we have one. Take us through it. And we did. The teachers talked about it and it's a solid teacher performance evaluation process. The challenge, I think, is twofold. One, do the teachers have sufficient time and resource to actually execute the performance evaluation process? So, are they given the time and resources to do that? And the second one is, are they willing to make the hard choices? In, in any organization, not simply Milton High School, there are hard choices and if, and we have a normal bell curve of performance, every organization does. Are we reinforcing the excellent teachers? That's a legitimate question. Are they getting awards? Are they getting compensation? Are they getting the atta boys they deserve to be role models, that they are? The teachers who, and Kathy and Russell could certainly comment in this, the good teachers who are looking to get better, are we providing them the resources and the time to make that possible? So, Dennis, your question about the professional development piece, I think there's an opportunity there. I'm not quite sure how we do that. I'm not sure where the budget is, et cetera, but I, surely that's an opportunity. And the third piece of this evaluation is that there are teachers that may or may not be performing as we would like them to. Okay? And do we have the wherewithal and the willingness to address that? So, I think, I'll speak for Steve, the parents were convinced that the administration is taking on that challenge. And I think that's important that they do that. And I think that the teachers should be aware that the administration has very high expectations, that the school committee could reinforce that through policy and procedure and that parental involvement, and Dr. Joe took us through this, I mean, they're the, they're the first gate in terms of creating student performance and they need to complement their efforts with the teachers. So, there could be more of that as well.
That's exactly...
That's just one of them.
That's exactly what I was asking. So, can you do the other four?
I can do the student support and Milton High School experience.
Okay.
As a student, I know that teachers are here and they give us a tool that we need to be our best, but sometimes us as students have to go, not the extra mile, but have to meet them halfway at least in order to be able to reach our potentials. I know the student body, we're all very different and we come from different backgrounds, we all have different situations going on at home and so that might be a struggle, but I feel that as a teacher's in a way of them just inspiring us like we were talking about before and just helping us and encouraging us to want to do our best, that's a way to help those students who don't always have that motivation or just encouragement to just reach their potential and be more than just, almost like, let's see, they can just keep on going instead of just being lazy and, and not working to like being able, being able to reach their full potential, basically.
Do you think you have the resources that you need to accomplish that?
Yes, I do.
Good.
I realize that a lot of teachers, they give it to us and sometimes, some people might complain because they might not want to, but when you actually realize that they've given it to you and that it's not too bad, it's always, it's just a lot easier to accept and take it and practice it, so that way you can achieve like, so that way you can achieve your full potential and just keep on going.
Great.
Let me jump in for a minute and let me try to tackle those two, the red and, and blue pieces of the puzzle. The instructional rigor part and the curriculum part. One of the things that we have, we began this morning is to, is an attempt to take learning initiatives, like higher-order thinking, student-centered lessons. Take some practices that are regarded as cutting-edge effective in changing learning and because we have a faculty of 77 members who have different views of what these words mean, first, first order of business is we started to develop a, a working definition for these terms, so when we sit around the table and we have a discussion, we all know what it means. Number two, is to include in our daily lessons, in the things that we'd be looking for as administrators, supervisors, as teachers, as colleagues, when we go in and we look at someone teach, we can be looking for those particular practices in what we see go on in a classroom. So, when it comes to the rigor piece, the first thing to do is to take some, some of these things that have been on the, sort of on the edge for a while, bring them to the fore, make sure everybody understands what they are, clarify any misunderstanding, get support and commitment to do them, and then find a way that, once we begin to implement them, we get folks in there that can give folks some feedback, not only from the administrator to the teacher, but another teacher to the teacher about whether we're doing this, to what degree we're doing it, where we're short, where we're making a hit and so on down the line. So, it's a question of getting some of these best practices in place. If we can do that, we'll be addressing the instructional rigor piece and that's the next job. At the same time, the NIASC report, as well as what we have done over the course of the year, we've identified, because curriculum typically gets rewritten every three to five years, by the time, by the time a curriculum comes up for review, it's been implemented for three to four years and some things have happened over the course of time. There were some changes into what that format may be, what the thrust may be. So, there's a, there is a need for faculty to sit and to talk about those changes and work those into the curriculum. Now, those are two things, the plan, the curriculum, and the instructional practice. That, those two acts require time. It was in the NIASC report, we recognize it's even in, I think it's on the first two or three pages, you'll see time in that third or fourth column. We need time to do that. And we hope that certainly in the next month and a half, we will come before you through superintendent and talk about a recommendation that we hope you will be able to implement for the next school year that will provide time for the faculty to do these two things. You can't do them, we can do them slowly and we can do them without extra time, but you really get a quantum leap, you get lots of bang for your buck if you get everybody together and you can work on this in a collaborative way, rather than three people work on this this year, four people work on something else the next year. So, time. Let me involve a little bit of money, because some of this also may include. And we're going to try to get through this, the, you know, we're not going to be wild-eyed and try to craft a time commitment that would be, it would be nice to say we requested it, but it would be impractical for the town. We'll try, like the devil, to find a cost-effective way to make this thing work. We think we can do it. But, that's the big, that's the big stumbling block for lots that need to be done in that red and that, those little blue sections. Student support piece, that, you know, faculty members can tell you, that happens in so many ways. It happens in programs and there are lots of, lots of them there. Probably the most effective way it happens at the school is in after-school meetings between teachers and students and before-school meetings between teachers and students. I mean, we get in in the morning, 7 o'clock, we're having our meeting, we might have 25, 30 people, faculty members scattered throughout the building with their doors open, working with kids. And in some classrooms where the teacher isn't there, you probably have someone in an AP class or an honor society member tutoring another student in the room. So, you, you get the sport, the support, not only through programs, but through the, for the mechanism that's in place for faculty to deliver this kind of support on a one-on-one basis. So, all of this is, what's going to make all of that work? The plan, list those activities, put them in an organized fashion and when you sit back, you say, oh my God, we're doing, I looked at it and I said, 60 activities? This is way too much. This is, but then you look back at it and they all deal with another twist or another element or a subset of the population. So, together, they make a difference. At first blush, you would say, oh my God, this is a scattergun approach, but it's far more organized and sensible than that. And the, the piece that we really need is the time to sit back and reflect and share and that's a time piece and it's, it's the one, it's the one difficult piece. It's the one piece I'm least confident about. I think the rest of it, I think we have the intelligence, I have the willingness, I think we have the skills of the faculty, I think the support from, from the school committee and the superintendent's office, but how do you, how do we work this missing piece of time in, so it's not a budget buster, so it doesn't sound... time in so it's not a budget buster, so it doesn't sound like it's some crazy, wild-eyed dream that other school systems don't do it, why can't we? You know, I think some of the, some of the, some of the most highly-regarded schools in this country have opportunities for faculty to meet, and there are a lot of them are elementary schools in New York City, where kids come in at 10 o'clock in the morning, faculty show up at 7 o'clock in the morning, and they have three hours of planning every day before the kids walk through the door. You can never do that in a high school setting. But God, if we had, if we had two and a half to three hours a month, that would be like gold to us. And that's the target.
Thanks, that's helpful.
Leroy, I'd like to comment on the last piece.
Good.
The green piece, because I know you wouldn't let us off the hook without asking us about it.
No, I wasn't going.
Okay. So we talked about this as well, is, you know, the value, as effective and as meaningful as this plan could be, it's only going to be successful if it's communicated effectively. And so we need to communicate this plan, and we need to make people aware of it and their role in executing against it. So if you said, you know, where do I think the challenge is? I think the real, the real challenge is communicating this plan to all the constituencies. The students need to know the plan. The teachers need to know the plan. Parents need to, the school committee needs to set the tone and the pace and the policy for the plan. If you believe the plan, and that's why, excuse me, that's why we said, one plan, one voice, if we're all in, then we can do this. If it's contentious in any way, or we like this part, but we don't like that part, then we need to figure that out, and we need to come to terms with that. But this is a good plan, but it's only going to be as effective as it could be if it's communicated, and we need to understand the roles and responsibilities to do that. And communication is a, is a timing thing. You can't wait halfway through the year and say, oh yeah, we have to talk about that.
Right.
Vern, or Kathy?
I just want to make a brief comment regarding the centerpiece of the plan around teacher performance and evaluation. Certainly as a faculty member here at Milton High School, I concur wholeheartedly with the puzzle and where that stands. And going to what Dr. Aranjia was saying in terms of the time, and I can speak for the math department, and I know that, you know, and I'm sure for the entire faculty, everybody's committed to really trying to inspire their students and give them the academic rigor and the challenges that they need. One of the challenges that we do have is that for once a month, we do have that common time at a faculty meeting, but which turns into a department meeting, but we really need more than that. You know, we find the time on our own during the free period, if somebody else has the same free period as myself, you know, I'll stop by the room, or they'll stop by my room, and we'll say, okay, what are you thinking about with this? You know, can we do something extra in terms of this particular topic or this subject, in terms of really trying to inspire the students? So we do a lot of ad hoc things, but it's not systematic, okay? And I think that to take it to the next level, what we need is a systematic approach. And the benefit of having a systematic approach, something common throughout the school, is that everybody's trying to do the same thing, approach it the same way, and that makes it much easier to measure. And if it's easier to measure, you can go through that cycle of improvement, of plan, do, check, and adjust. And that's really what it's all about, trying to get that cycle of improvement, the cycle of refinement, so you can go toward that level of excellence, which is what we want to do.
Kristin, you got a question?
Yeah, I just had a couple.
I just wanted to comment real quickly-
Go right ahead.
Just about the, something that the student support there, but for the teacher's support as well, as far as like professional development. I don't think I've ever been denied to go on a workshop for professional development, whether it be AP. I've been out of the state, I've been within the state two days, three days, one day, and something that we would really benefit from would be a little bit more time when I come back, for example, when the teachers come back to be able to share within the department what we went, what we were exposed to, and, because there's so many good workshops out there, and we do go, this primary source is teachers and scholars, there's the Bureau of Education Research, and many, many teachers go out and experience and benefit, and the students benefit. But the one little missing piece that would work very, very well, when we used to do it with the seven-hour professional workshops, would be to share, to have the time to share with the people within my department, because like Vern said, one hour a month is really hard to get a five-day workshop or a two-day workshop out there to them. We can only do so much within our own time, so I would just echo what he said as far as sharing professional development with our colleagues, yeah.
Kristin, if you-
Kristin, you go ahead.
Thanks. I was going to ask you two for a question, so that was good. It's a great presentation, and the parental participation is really great, of course the teachers and the administrators are too, but you know, under Ed reform, parents are supposed to really be involved, and this is a great example of how involved parents are, so that's a wonderful thing. The, just a couple of comments. The, the ways that you involve the students, they're great, all the different ways that you have, that, you know, student of the month and et cetera. You talked about the 50% that's above and below the certain bar, and I guess my focus is always on 50% below. What are we doing for them? How are we pulling them up? Because the kids who are at the top are near the top, how do we pull up the kids from the bottom? What are concrete plans around doing that? And you have some in here, the bridge program, the mentoring program. I know we need more, I know those are resources, I know they cost money, but I guess I just would always put out a plug for, you know, we need more of that in an emphasis around social, emotional, and health. Health education, of course, I'm always going to be talking about that. And I guess I would like to see a high school student achieving plan really specifically address that when I think about substance abuse in Milton and in every community. We have all been touched by that, the kids have all been touched by that, and you know, what are, what are our goals as a system around dealing with those kinds of high-risk behaviors? Because it doesn't matter what we do academically if we're not looking at a way to help kids with those other issues. So I guess that's more of an editorial comment. A question for the teachers was, or a comment, and both, my kids have had, I've had kids that have had both of you, so I know your style, I know what you've done with the kids, and it's a wonderful thing, so I, safe to ask this. The teachers that do do a good job, like the two of you, you have excitement, you have content knowledge, and you have excitement about the content knowledge, but you also develop those relationships with kids, where you go, hmm, come over, what's going on? Or what's happening here? Or how come, you know, you're not doing this? And how do you get that to other teachers? Not to put you on the spot, but how do you get other teachers to build those kinds of relationships with kids? Or is that not a question you're comfortable?
It's a, it's a natural process, obviously, and it does come with time and experience. But one of the, the student advisory period that we have, the activity period, is exactly, that's the whole crux of the student advisory period. And the student advisory period is we have our homeroom. I have seniors this year, so I've been with these kids for four years, and we do get to know them pretty well, because we have them two times a week. And what through the student advisory is we are their faculty advisor, so that the students are comfortable with another adult within the school, other than a guidance counselor, to go to, to talk about issues exactly like that. They become comfortable with us over time, and we strike up conversations with them exactly, not just academics. Today we were talking about the prom, we talk about time after the prom, what's going on, what are the plans, and they become kind of comfortable with us, and they're very aware of who their faculty advisor is. So that's something that's been implemented this year, that has worked very well, and will continue next year as well. But it is a natural process that a lot of the teachers, if they get a chance to see the experienced teachers through the mentor program, we're always available to answer questions, and it just happens kind of naturally, I would say. It's a teacher bred characteristic that we have.
Thank you.
I would echo some of the comments that Kathy made, and also from the fact that, you know, once you've, as an experienced teacher, I won't say how long, but as an experienced teacher, you realize that there are a couple of things going on. One is you're trying to deliver the content, but it's also that relationship that you have with the students, that's, that's very important. And, and that relationship, you know, it's one thing that you have a certain atmosphere in the classroom where you're teaching, but if you can have that opportunity to meet with the students outside the classroom, especially after school, you know, where you have that one-on-one experience or conversation, then that can go a long ways toward building up that classroom relationship. And I've had some students who've struggled a little bit, and maybe they didn't like the discipline that I impose in the classroom, but you know, when we have a conversation later on, one-on-one, then, you know, there can be a meeting of the minds, and that's very important.
Thank you. Can I make one more?
Sure.
And this is more of a question or just feedback? I guess, I think that when I look at these, there's some really specific goal, indicators. There's, there's very specific, what did you call the first column? Initiatives, very specific. The indicators are not, some are not as specific. Increased student achievement, okay, how are you going to measure that? Increase enrolled students in Milton High School versus private school? Well, what are the statistics on that? Like you have a lot of indicators, but how are you going to show that you did that? And increase student and teacher engagement? What are the plans to make some of those operationalized, I guess would be the right word, right David?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm not making a criticism, I'm just giving feedback. You come back next year with this same document, how are you going to tell us you did all this?
And, and so I'd like to comment on that, Kristin. We did as much as we could in the time that we had, and the measures, some being very ambiguous, need work. Next year, we would come back with stronger, more powerful measures-
Okay.
-and benchmarking to validate the plan. It's, a plan is always in process, and we need to get better, and if given more time and resource, we could have a better plan. But that's, I mean, we tried to get the goals and the initiatives and the accountability straight, and then you kind of run out of time, and that's what we, we did the best we could. But I think that's an excellent question, and I, I also wanted to comment on, you know, something you said, how do you get like a Vern Nelson or a Kathy Quealy? How do you get one of those teachers? Because we want 77 of those.
True. That's fair, thank you.
I think it goes, I think it goes back to teacher evaluation. I think there's a three-year, I think it's called your non-professional status, you know? That's where we, you know, that's where we fish or cut bait, and if, if you want to have Vern's and Kathy's, then you got to beef up that three-year non-professional plan. Because after three years, and I think I just heard Vern say it, comes with experience and mentorship, we have the capacity and the capability to do that. We need to leverage it.
Anything else from the committee?
Well, I wanted to thank you, this is one of the best site council presentations I've seen, and I think it reinforces a couple of things. I know, and sometimes we've had issues with trying to get parents to be on site councils, and if there was ever an example of why there should be a line to get onto site councils, this is it. I mean, this is a great way of knowing how a school works for, for, for parents. And also, it's, it's taken a direction here that I think, as a school committee, we like to see. I mean, it reinforces the notion, there are only two jobs in a school system. There's teaching, and there's supporting the teachers. I mean, that's all, that's all it is. I mean, those, everyone else plays a different role in supporting the teachers. But, and where this has started to go tonight is telling us, you know, what is it you need from us to support the teachers? And I mean, that's, that's the whole point of the site councils and the reform processes, to come to the school committee and say, you know, this is where we need to go, and this is what it's going to take to get us here. And as we're, you know, so much of what we do is budgetary and so forth, we need to know that. So I mean, getting that level up to us is fabulous, because that's, that's what we need to see. I mean, is, you know, our job is, is policy and budget, and that's pretty, you know, that's where we spend the lion's share of our time. And so we need to know the policies that work, and we need to know what it's going to take to get us there. And so having the site council sort of drill down to that level is going to be wonderful for us, so I applaud your work, it's a great job.
Do you have something to say?
Well, I, I think, and I'll be very short, I think there's an opportunity here. I don't know if we have a brand. And if we had a brand, we wouldn't have to spend 90% of our time figuring out where to cut an English class at Glover in second grade and fourth grade. If we had a brand, then we would have the budget that would equate to the brand. We have a logo, but I'm not sure we have a brand. And Kristin's point about health and safety, drug education, Vern and Kathy's points, student excellence, before school, after school, student environment, there's a lot of things that could go into a brand that we may come to realize that we offer a $20,000 a year per student education, and we're only paying 11 or 12 for it. That's a bargain. Down the street, I think it's 33. Down the red line, I think it's maybe 16 or 18. We need a brand.
Interesting idea.
Mr. Pavlicek.
Yes, Kristin Walker.
And, and you were doing so well. I, I think we do have a brand, and I don't think that's, I don't think that's the challenge we face. And in fact, I think part of what we heard earlier, if you were here earlier, is I think we heard some parents saying, we understood what the brand was, we understood what the policy was, we understood what we thought we were buying with that brand, and we don't think we got it. So I don't think the brand is, is the challenge we have. I think that we are existing in an environment where we have fiscal constraints, and the financial model that the town has is one where we have to go through a budget process, an agonizing budget process every year. And I think that, that what I would agree with is we have to see if we can figure out what the untouchables are in the budget. And, but that, that's going to be a difficult discussion, and even there, if, even if we can do that, and I think we can, everyone's not going to be happy with what we, we decide those untouchables are. And we should do it with all the input we can get, but at the end of the day, we are constrained in terms of resources. We, we had an advancement budget that we really weren't able to advance, and that's a problem. But, but I think this is a good discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, Milton High School Site Council, A+. Good job. Next, I'd like to invite our Consolidated Facilities Director, our town's Consolidated Facilities Director, Bill Ritchie, to the table. Every year, Mr. Ritchie, as the prior director of facilities in the Milton Public Schools, would give an update on our facilities, and to bring the public back to, within the last year, the town of Milton has decided to create a department, a Consolidated Facilities Department. Mr. Ritchie is the director of that department, and the goal of that department is to develop a budget and a short and long-term plan to oversee the resources, buildings, and grounds in the town. So we welcome Mr. Ritchie here tonight for the first time in his new role as the Consolidated Facilities Director for the Town of Milton. Good evening, Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you very much for having me. Can you hear me here? I gave you, I gotta move my-
Yes. Mr. Lynch, do you want to help Mr. Ritchie to facilitate the camera?
It was the light we had for this camera. Well, thank you for having me. So I, you know, handed out, I passed out last week, I gave you a, a little plan of what, you know, where the Consolidated Facilities was going. So if, you know, if you want, I mean, I know you, you know, I know it's late in the evening, I'll maybe kind of do the slide presentations if you have any questions. There's a lot of slides, so it could generate a lot of conversation, so if you mind, I kind of, I can go back here so I can see what's actually going on.
Thank you.
So obviously, if you, at the special town meeting, we started out with the admission statement. This is my mission statement right here. I won't read it all, but you know, pretty much it's managing roughly 22 facilities in town. The main thing is promote a safe, clean, and well-maintained environment for all building occupants. This right, this slide right here generates, it's 22 facilities, around 900,000 square feet of space, the value of facilities is about 175 million. The value of facilities is about 175 million, it's probably 200 million, we look at property. Total oversight with schools in town is roughly 32 right now, 25 on the school side, five on the town side, contract vending services, and we have one contract cleaning service on the town side. This will be the long-term plan as far as what the department will do. Obviously, I entered the town administrators, attend the schools, have an office assistant, and we're in the process of hiring an operations manager. As a matter of fact, tomorrow night, the operations manager position will be approved on the town side, personnel board and selectmen. Hopefully by the end of this month, have that person on board. We've already hired a maintenance man and a maintenance craftsman that transferred from the school department into Consolidated Facilities. And also next, tomorrow night, we are trying to get the license, maintenance electrician on board and have that position approved. So hopefully by the, you know, the end of next month, we may have the full complement of staff. And then from there, just keep, keep building. I'm not saying I want to keep growing, but I want to keep building, you know what I mean? And then, you know, these are all the town buildings. These are some of the responsibilities the operation manager will do, these are just all the main ones, there's probably many more. And there's going to be a learning curve for all of us, trying to pick and choose and, and, you know. And these are some of the common goals of the department, to complete the condition study for all facilities. We hired DRA, the architectural firm, we actually built the schools. We budgeted $50,000, and we were able to get the contract for $48,000. They've already started, we passed out to most of the department heads, a study report, a seven-page report that they can start documenting some of the things that they want to see happening, some of the issues in the buildings. And DRA has also taken all my documents, all my plans, scanned them in, so they'll have a good understanding of all the buildings. So that, and we're hoping, I was hoping by the end of this week to get started, so it'll probably be, all the engineers and architects will start going around the buildings starting next week. We want to implement a web-based preventive maintenance plan and work order system, and we're just about ready to have it up and running. It's actually running on the town side, we just loaded out to all the department heads on the town side, and next week we'll probably, next two weeks on the school side. There's still a lot of training, because it's pretty elaborate. And obviously, want to do some consolidated vendors and cost efficiency, and continue to obtain energy grants. This is the school do plan that we have on the school side, we're already using the rental, a rental plan, but, you know, so we're gonna, it was just a nice maverick to keep going. This is what the new work order system will look like. You'd kind of go onto the web base, you put your work order in, we can track all your purchases, we can track all the labor. So hopefully, within five years, we can say that we spent X amount of hours on a certain building, how many roof reports, how much we spent, real good documentation, documentation we never really had. And it's going to be a good way for me to build a budget, I can say, I really need this amount of resources, this amount of money to do a good job to maintain facilities. This next slide right here is where we're at with all the custodians on the school side. We started back in 2000, this is an old slide, somebody may have seen it before a few years ago. But we started out with roughly 447,000 square feet of space back in 2000. We had 25 custodians and two floaters. We averaged throughout the district about 16,000 square feet. As we are today, we're about 680,000 square feet, 25 custodians, we're averaging 27,000 square feet of space. So we've really increased it without increasing custodians. One of the reasons I wanted to do this slide is because during the special town meeting, some gentleman came up, a town meeting member, and asked the question, where are we with other schools? So I wanted at least to let the people know that I take their information serious, and wanted to let them know that I did some research. So I went to, I went to other few school districts, looked at wealthy public schools, their average custodian's doing about 25,000 square feet, Hamilton 28, 37, you know, and all the way right down the line. So I think considering we're doing about 27,000 square feet, that is actually, when we look at that, that's productive cleaning. The average custodian doesn't do productive cleaning, because at nighttime, they're opening doors for teachers, for the drama people, they're running around doing odds and ends. So your square footage really goes up. It's probably about 33,000 square feet. So what does that mean? Well, here's what the national guidelines for, you know, for cleaning represent. You have four levels of cleaning, and actually five, we don't even look at five, I say there's four. If you're five, you're pretty much flunked. But you want to maintain somewhere about a level three cleaning, and that's about 33,000 square feet of space. So I think we're right at the target. One of the issues that we have to think about is that we know budget, and we know staff for when a person's out on vacation for two weeks, out and sick, has a disability. That's where the level of cleaning really goes up, the square footages. But we're staffed, if everybody shows up, I think we're staffed fairly adequately, and if you looked at the study I did earlier, you know, if you looked, this one right here, we're actually right in the middle. So I think we're doing, you know, quite well compared to other schools. You know, green cleaning initiatives, I always like to keep this slide, because it's really, it's a piece of me. I think green cleaning is the way to go, it's, it's good for the environment, good for students, you know, good for that. And as a matter of fact, Matt and I were at a meeting the other day, and one of the custodians asked us, why don't we use bleach anymore for cleaning? This is why we don't use bleachers, you know, it's a, it's a good disinfectant, we'll use it in the food service operations, for maybe, you know, sanitizing their knives, but we don't clean with bleach anymore. There's a lot of products out there that are much better.
Thank you.
And there's some of the awards that the staff and I have got over the years, so we've been, you know, pretty active in that. Now all the fun stuff, this is what, this is my passion, you know what I mean? I'm up on the roof. This was, this slide represents two things. One, it's representing the ductwork project that we started, and actually, the roofing project that we started. And this is taking some measurements prior to that. And that white coating is doing all the prep work for the actual in-house job that we did. Next slide, you know, I actually looked at this slide, it looked like I'm the only one paying attention here, you know? Everybody else is talking about something else. But I brought all these people around who actually did the job, and were actually going to guarantee the job, so I wanted to make sure everybody was here, we draw all the eyes. So these are all the engineers and people that actually were in charge of the project. And this is, this is the coating that was actually completed on the job, so I tried to do a two-page, do two things. This is the actual, when we did this job in-house, Matt and I tried to get the guys, we got some training for the staff in-house. The, it was about, the Glover project was 65, 16,500, if we bid it out, it was about $110,000 or 6.67 cents per square foot, 10-year warranty. We did the job in-house, $37,000, $2.30. We saved, on the Tucker project, we saved 77,000, and on the Glover project, we saved $72,000 by doing it in-house. These are the things that we can do, these are, this is why you want to go consolidation, build a nice department, you can save, that's a $160,000 savings right there by doing this project in-house, and getting a 10-year warranty on the job. This is the, you know, we, you know, we went to the town, we got some capital money, and the school department pitched in some extra money to do the duct project at the Pierce Middle School in Glover. This is the old exterior ductwork, and this is the picture right here when it's all completed, it's all pitched, it's much, the 10-year warranty on the, on the work. This is another, just another close-up of the project. Ongoing energy conservation management, you know, we continue to be, you know, we're in the process right now of looking at a third-party energy consultant, get indoor lighting again, LED, variable speed drives, energy management systems, demand controls. At the middle school, we just finished another project, 170 hallway lights, went from 96, 93 watts to 57 watts. And at the end of the line, we got $62,000 from a grant, we used some green community monies, it cost us $0, and we're saving money every month. This is the next phase I want to go, and actually, I can use this little pointer here. It's very hard, a little hard to see, but this is the existing high school boiler, it's a Clever Brooks, it's a two-fire boiler, and it's all linkage controls right here. So the technology today is going to this type of same boiler, but you change all the controls to computerized controls. That's the motor with a VFD, there's a lot of energy, so we're going to be bringing down engineers to look at our systems and say, hey, look, is there money to go ahead to change all these controls to get better efficiency? So the existing boiler, we're doing about 87% efficiency, we can maybe get to 93%, 93%. This is the existing hot water tank at the high school, it's 900, it's 900 gallon tank, in the summertime, we just heat it up. Waste of money. So what I like to do is maybe bring the engineers in, and maybe get 100 water, 100 gallon water tank, shut that down, save some energy, and just use what we need. Why heat this thing for the whole summer to heat hot water? It's just a waste of money. So these are things I want to look at, and these are things where I think the next phase will be going. Great pictures, this is the, this is the, actually, the field house, this, all the solar panels. And I think it's a nice slide just to kind of look at, they did a wonderful job. As a matter of fact, I was talking to the building commission today, who actually inspected the roof, and he says, he has never, in the last 10 years, seen a company that do work, this is great. That's from the building officials of the town. Said, beautiful work, all the lines, all the pipes and safety, so that's really nice to hear. This is, this is the B-C link, this is actually shot right here, I just want to show, like, that's all the balance system, so there's no penetrations, that's how they hold down, you know, with the, with the blocks. And that's actually, right down here, that's the old part of the roof. This is, this is all the inverters outside. You can actually, if you walk over, you can press the buttons, you can see how much energy's being produced every day. This will eventually be all fenced in. Matt and I thought there was a safety issue by leaving it out there, so we want to have it all fenced in, the company's willing to put a new fence up for us. You know, energy star update, we've been obviously working for the last two years of trying to do energy star. So we have applied for energy star again, and our score came back at a 92, so we should hopefully with the next two months, it takes a little long with the EPA, but we should be getting energy star for the high school, and then Tucker will fall right after that. So I'm just waiting for the engineer to stamp it, and then we'll photo back on. And this is our utility consumption, this is actually a slide I stole from Matt. But, you know, it's an, obviously, we've been doing really good with all the, all the electricity up top. Every month, we've been saving, total district so far is about 12%, savings, and natural gas, about 22%. Obviously, we really, you know, are the numbers really great, there's been a great winter, but still, if you look at the, just on the electricity, we're still saving enormous amount of money, we continue to save, we continue to be in venerate, looking at lighting, tweaking all our schedules. I believe that's the last part of my slide, so if you have any questions, you know, I know I talk quick, but there's a lot of information, I know you had a tough one, you know, so.
Any questions for Mr. Ritchie?
Got to have one question.
Well, I would say, not so much a question, but you still participate in our facility subcommittee meetings every month, and Bill stays closely involved with all the workings. You know, you said that slide was from Matt, every month, we look at our consumption, and it's really informative for me, I mean, I've learned so much being on the facility subcommittee meeting, subcommittee, but it's just bringing it to a bigger, a bigger level. And I think that the work that you've done in energy savings in the schools can now benefit the town as well, so I'm excited about this. Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Ritchie?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, no, it's a privilege, it's a privilege to serve the town, I love it, this stuff, I love this stuff.
Now you'll love it for the whole town.
Just like, you have more roofs to walk on now.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Thank you.
Do you have all of it?
Yeah. Thank you.
A reminder, before our next school committee meeting on April 11th, Mr. Phalen, do you want to speak to the special event on April 11th in the evening in collaboration with Ms. Sheridan?
Sure. We are very excited, we have our last meeting tomorrow for the 350th celebration partnership with the Milton Public Schools. The event will be Wednesday, April 11th, at the high school auditorium, the Charles Winchester Auditorium. We will start with showing some student work and having some great music by our orchestra in the foyer of the auditorium. We will then go into the auditorium and see some incredibly gifted work by our students at the elementary, middle, and high school level, and also hear some great music. The goal of the evening is to let our students show us, as a community, how they have researched and looked into what the 350 years of Milton have brought in terms of education to the town, and we hope to have our student audience and our adult audience look forward as to what we can bring in the future for the students in the community of Milton. So we look forward to a great night, we sent out invitations to everybody at the table, and also to dignitaries in the town, and we hope to have a very enjoyable evening on April 11th. And I would like to thank committee member Sheridan for not only running the 350th celebration, but partnering with the schools and including us in this spring's event.
I'm sorry, when is it, April 11th, when?
Wednesday night, 6:40, 6:30 at the high school.
So you don't have next Wednesday night off?
That's right.
I noticed. Can I just say one thing? So this event is, has been planned, as John said, for such a long time, and I really want to encourage all community members to attend. It's really not just for parents of students who are participating, it's one more way to celebrate the rich history of the town of Milton. So I hope that lots of people will come out and see the great work that the schools have been doing this year.
Thank you.
And I know the hour is getting late, and you have more items on your agenda, but for the viewing public, we've begun our search for a new principal of Milton High School. And the way we work on our screening committee, we go to the Milton Educators Association, and they send forward three teachers. We work with the PTO presidents, and they sent an email out to all Milton Public School parents, asked for volunteers, and they chose out of a hat, three parents to serve in that committee. You're represented by Chairman Pavlicek, John Phalen and I, and one principal, Janet Sheehan from the Collycot. We have put out our nets, our advertisements, so that we have a large pool of candidates. All of those applications are given to all of the screening committee members, several of you have sat on that committee. We have now had two very long sessions in which, one, every group brainstormed what they were looking for in the new Milton High School principal, so that we have an idea before we begin the questioning and the interviewing, what we're looking for in the new principal. And then we brainstormed questions, areas of questions, specific questions, we proofread those questions together, and then we gathered back and we decided which candidates we were going to ask in for the interviews. And so next week, we have two full days of interviewing, and that group will send forward their recommendations to a second committee that the school committee and administrators will sit on. If need be, we have done site visits in the past, and we'll be bringing forth, and I will be recommending and appointing a new principal of Milton High School. So the school committee will be kept in close involvement in that process, but we have, you saw that site council tonight from the high school, we have a committee equal in its dedication and enthusiasm and involvement, and I have to tell you a little secret, you are well represented by Chairman Pavlicek. He did extraordinary work reviewing every single resume and set a very high bar with his comments on every single candidate. And as I say to the members of the committee, if individuals, professionals took the time to apply to the Milton School District, we're going to give equal time to their applications. So we're on our way on that screening process. Briefly, two, three more notes. I would be remiss if I didn't mention what might have been one of the most moving nights that I've had in the Milton Public Schools. The Best Buddies Program across Massachusetts, teams up in public high schools, children with special needs, with, with role models, peers, and programs happen all through the school year, whether it's going out of school on a bowling program or after-school events. So this organization across the state has a prom for their high school students. And last year, I saw our students getting on the bus to go to Bentley or Babson. So we offered the Best Buddies Organization our Copeland Family Field House. And last Saturday night, 600 children from across the state with their best buddies came to their prom in our field house, dressed in their prom outfits, boys and girls alike. There was a disc jockey. The director of the Best Buddies, I want to stop right now and tell you, told me that in all of the activities they've run, they've never gone to a school system where the parents were so committed, the custodians were so involved, and the students working with them, they turned the field house into a dreamland. The theme was Candy Land, and there was a candy bar, everyone had pizza and tonic, and then this disc jockey started playing, and it was transformed into a very, very, very special prom night. And so the two young men who run Best Buddies, the chairman of, the chairman and co-chairman of the board, I took the liberty on behalf of you and told them they could have the field house for as long as they were holding proms in Massachusetts. So it was a phenomenal night. So it was a phenomenal night, and a lot of very, very happy, um, young high school students, uh, experienced something very special that night. Just a moment. Emily Posse, uh, finished sixth in the regional final for the, uh, Scripps Spelling Bee, held on the Patriot Ledger and the Times. You see across the state, but our Emily Posse, uh, represented Milton and competed. And in the geography bee, the regional national geographic bee, uh, that was held in Worcester last weekend, Al Renz from Pierce Middle School finished in the top twenty in the region. And so those two talented middle school students, uh, should be recognized. Any questions, comments? You're an outstanding audience tonight. Thank you.
Well, I'm certainly not going to give a presentation that, let me say, one thing quickly and we'll move on. I just wanted to also mention, we had a great, uh, event a couple Mondays ago for, for Jackie Morgan and the Food Service Awards, and we had, uh, Senator Kerry here, we had Congressman Lynch, we had State Senator Joyce, we had State Representatives Timelti and Dorcina Florrie, we had people from, um, you know, federal government. We had a very good turnout, um, and it was a, it was a great presentation, and it was a, it was great to see all the food service workers up, up the stage getting their, uh, award, getting recognized. It was a, it was a very good morning, um, as I should mention that. We had mentioned it here earlier, but it really, it worked out to be a wonderful morning. We have other things on the report, so I will move along. I'll move over to the health and wellness report.
I'll be brief. Um, the Health and Wellness Committee with, uh, John and Mary and several other people meet, as you know, each month. And this last month, we got an update, uh, from Rich Carino, who's the, one of the school adjustment counselors on the bullying prevention efforts. And it wasn't about numbers, you know, how many kids have been bullied, not been bullied, reported, not bullied. That's, wasn't our, uh, goal. We just wanted to know what's been happening with it. And, um, it's really been a pretty incredible prevention effort. It's, um, really been an outstanding effort, uh, probably one of the best in Massachusetts, and certainly the earliest done in Massachusetts. And the approach of the Milton Public School staff has really been on how to keep things confidential at the, and anonymous, at the same time recognizing the power differential in the bullying versus, um, disciplinary issues. And, um, the bullying versus disciplinary issues are looked at by each principal, and the definition of bullying, which is a targeted pattern that includes a power differential, because often parents and kids mix up the two. They have a fight on the schoolyard, and they think, you know, the parent thinks it's bullying, but there isn't a power differential and there isn't a targeted effort to bully this kid. So it's really important to keep out there, uh, in the public for kids and for parents, what bullying actually is. But one of the things that Rich reported on, which I thought was very interesting, is that the anonymous tip line, the tips have really gone down, and, um, we weren't sure why. It might be that it's less needed, but it also might be that the culture, especially with the older kids, is you gotta break through the culture of you can't tell. You know, you have to change that culture of you can tell about bullying, and that's hard for kids to tell, or if they tell their parents, they say, but you can't tell anybody. So we wanted to remind people about the anonymous tip line, which is six-nine-six-four-four-seven-oh, extension five-four-four-oh, right, John?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And then also on the web, there's a tab for bullying, and it's a, I did not know this. I knew there was a tab for bullying, but I did not know that it's a link to an anonymous tip line. So you can also do it online, and it will go, an email message, an anonymous email message will go to the principal of the school that you're reporting a child incident at, and that principal is responsible to investigate that, which I did not know that. And I thought I knew all there was to know about the bullying prevention efforts in Milton. Um, and the curriculum and the discipline rubric are also online, and Rich Carino, Durin, um, it's like, Ri, Ri, Rich?
Carino.
Carino. Thank you. And Lisa Veldren at the Pierce, Rich at the high school, Lisa at the Pierce, they're just two staff that any parent or child can talk to, who are on the committee, and there's several other staff as well. But those are the Guidance folks that I think of. So the, up, John, did I miss anything? Cause you were, you were on the bullying stuff?
No, no, just that the, uh, we have a twelve-member BPAC committee, a bullying, uh, prevention committee that runs K to twelve. Uh, they just met, uh, I believe on Monday. They meet quarterly. There's a curriculum that, that is accessible online. The tip line is accessible online. Uh, parents can avail themselves to what their students are doing at each, uh, grade level in terms of the themes that are, uh, been created, uh, by the BPAC committee. The curriculum is organic, meaning that the, this committee, uh, created the curriculum based on what is a good fit for Milton. And, um, so I do agree with Kristin that we are fortunate to be, uh, very far well ahead of the curve in terms of having all those things in place, uh, with the bullying initiative being so new to the district and, uh, so new to the state. So, uh, uh, we're very happy to be able to continue that work, and the wellness committee, uh, is a great forum to make sure that we're always following up with each other and keeping on pace.
Good. Okay. And then, um, the other thing I want to talk about was CATS, which is another valuable community partner with us. Todd Ducham is a parent in Milton who runs CATS, and he did, I think it was forty-five student athletes signed up for his three-week, uh, in-between-sport seasons, um, conditioning program in an effort to help prevent injuries, especially, what's the injury that always happens that happens more in girls? ACL?
ACL.
ACL, yeah. So, uh, that's the goal of his program. And twenty-two staff members signed up for a conditioning program early in the morning. I don't think John and Mary signed up for that, did they?
Next time.
Um, so he's going to continue doing that, and it's a real collaborative effort to reach both students and, um, teachers to provide some stress relief around their conditioning.
That class conflicted with Marionize yoga class that we take, uh, at sunrise at, um, a local studio.
Thank you for sharing.
You do.
Yeah. That was a secret. Um, and I know you're sick of hearing me say this, but the committee keeps talking about the need for more health educators. We talked about recent circumstances where kids really need more information about substance abuse and other issues, other high-risk behaviors, not just in Milton, but everywhere. And Guidance is doing a great job at planning as many events and talking to as many kids as they can, but they, they need more support around that. Rich Carino and other folks are planning, um, an event on October twenty-second with Chris Heron. I think I mentioned this last time, but I want to get the date out there again. And also that they need money to help pay for this. It's all raised from, you know, this donation to that donation. We don't have any money to pay for this. So we're really look, even though October twenty-second's a far ways away, we need money to pay for this event. He's a motivational speaker, he was an addict, and, uh, he'll be a great example to our kids about, uh, some of the things that they need, uh, to think about. I think that's all that I have from the, oh, and then the wellness policy? We approved it.
We did.
The wellness committee approved it, and it's gone on now to the subcommittee on policy?
Mm-hmm.
So we can pass that on to you?
As we speak.
Okay. Um, and that's a federal policy that we have to have, but we've approved it, and now we're passing it on to you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Any questions?
Well, not a question, but a, a, um, I guess an endorsement. I, I think we should set aside some time to talk about if we're doing enough in the drug abuse education area, because the police department also says that they're seeing some increase in drug activity. And, you know, if, if we needed any more stark reminders, we just had one. So I, I really think we should make that an agenda item, and let's talk about it a little bit. I mean, I think, you know, when Kristin says it, we all nod our heads, but I, I think we need to have a, a structured discussion about what can we do, what should we be doing? And if we need to reallocate some resources, maybe we need to do that. But before we have, um, any more deaths, let's, um, let's make sure we've at least given it a complete discussion.
Um, and if I might, uh, I've said it before, but, um, it's very constructive, the you, the impact of the school committee having these, uh, subcommittees. Um, Ms. Sheridan mentioned the facility subcommittee, and it raises it to the school committee level, so that the school committee's involved, and the initiatives come to your level. And to Ms. Bagley Jones, this health and wellness, um, that we're this much further ahead, it's all organized, there's a K-12 group that, um, all support one another, the initiatives are K-12, um, we own the work, and I think that they realize that this issue is at the school committee level. So, uh, last year, within the, I think it was three years ago, Ms. Bagley Jones brought forth, and, uh, a parent, Dr. John Knight, who's at Children's Hospital in Harvard, and, um, he was, he works with adolescents around substance abuse, and I have a meeting with him, uh, tomorrow morning. Again, that partnership started because of Ms. Bagley Jones's initiative with health and wellness, and as you can see by her report tonight, um, there's a lot of support for these initiatives. Um, you know, again, it's a communication device, and I think all of these individuals feel like this is something that the school committee and the town cares about, because they are passionate about, and you heard it tonight, um, the health and wellness and support of the students. So I want to thank you. It's, it's really benefited the system.
Ms. Sheridan?
I just have a quick question, Kristin. I don't know if you can answer this question, actually, but you talked about the great job we do at, um, having anonymous, um, notification to the schools, but are there bullying boxes in every school? Do you know if there, there's a way for the kids themselves to put an anonymous?
I don't believe there are.
I believe that there may be bullying boxes, places where students can drop notes at the elementary level.
Okay.
And the, and the middle school and high school students know, the email and the telephone.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
That's a good question. I thought it was the electronic version, but it makes sense.
It's good to something at the elementary level, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else from Ms. Bagley Jones? For our finance subcommittee report, we only had one item. Ms. Kelly was unable to be here. The powers and solvency of your financial report, which is distributed to you. This is just a process audit on our actual end-of-year report filing. This isn't the full-blown audit that the town does every year. And we came through it without any comments whatsoever, so I think that was, that was quite good. Mr. Gillis, you want to say anything on it, or is the?
No, they, it's not a full-blown audit. They're just checking our, uh, to see that we complied upon, uh, complied with the procedures that the DOE specifies when we report our data. So they tie it back out to the general ledger and some of our backup documentation and let the DOE know that everything we told them was, was materially accurate.
Mr. Matt, can you say a little more about what we asked them to do and what they actually did? Because if anyone bothered to read the letter, they would say, well, there seem to be contradictory statements in there. For example, they say, we can make no representations on the sufficiency of the procedures, and then they say, but we found no instances of non-compliance. So can you just reconcile those for anyone who might actually read this?
Yeah. Unfortunately, the way the accounting world, um, has evolved over the years, I mean, I think folks might recall the Big Eight is now the Big Four, or however many, you know, firms, uh, there used to be, now there's only a few left. There's a lot more legal disclosure of all the things that they're not doing in case there's a problem down the road, so they don't get held liable. Um, in, in a case like this, we report our data in, back to the DOE in the format that they ask for, and the auditing firm comes in and checks our general ledger and says, how did you get to that number? And they, they proof a bunch of things in the report. And, um, after about a day and a half to two days' worth of, of checking through the eighty pages, and, and checking in with us for some questions to make sure that they're finding it correctly, um, then they take it back to their office, they review it some more, and then they'll write this up, and, you know, the, the one sentence, no instances of non-compliance with the agreed-upon procedures were noted, is, is good of a endorsement that, that you're going to get from the auditors, because they're not going to pat you on the back for how well you organize and give them information, or how accurate it is. They just say, we couldn't find anything wrong with it. It, it's hard to get excited about it. It really is.
I, I was excited about it.
All right. So, um, old business, citizens speak topic responsible today. It's the first night we've had substantial citizens speak in quite a while, so maybe on a future.
We will have something.
So we will have some response. Um, next agenda meeting items, Mr. Walker suggested one for not necessarily for next agenda, but for future agenda having to do with, uh, drug abuse, uh, education.
And I have two more for the upcoming meeting on the twenty-fifth. One, I'd like to have Jackie Morgan back to talk about pink slime. Uh, it appears that Boston has banned it in their food products, so I'd like to talk about why we decided that we don't need to do that. That's one. The other one is, can we have the, um, debate team that recently performed so well in for recognition?
Anything else for upcoming agendas? All right. That concludes the regular portion of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations with the APSME unit.
Still moving.
Not to re, uh, return to, uh, open session, but to adjourn directly from executive session. I heard Mr. Walker move it.
I did.
Seconded by Mr. Cohane. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Bagley Jones?